So you're on email, you might want to get to that point, says I love you, hit send and it should be done with it. I understand. I understand. All right, we're going to reconvene Commissioners Court. It is, it is 20 minutes till the hour of 11 o'clock. We're at Agenda Item Number 24, Considering to Take Action on Resolution Ballot for Election for Appraisal District Board of Directors, Attachment Number 24. Commissioners, it's my understanding through Mark Benneke over at the Tax Office that we have an obligation to confirm or change out election appraisal district board members, Board of Directors members, and there is a form that we have. And also, if you'll notice on the third page of that form, it determines how many votes each of the subdivisions within the county are allotted. City of Anderson, two. City of Bediyes, three votes. City of Iowa, two votes. City of Navasota, 210. Grimes County has 1,425. Anderson, Chiros, CISD, 785. Iowa, ISD, 377. Madisonville, CISD. You might ask, what's Madisonville doing in there? A portion of our county in the northeast corner is serviced by Madison, CISD. Navasota, ISD, which is the biggest vote number, 1978. Richards, ISD, is 78. For a total of 5,000. The coming up with these numbers was before my time, but that's according to some formula that I guess the state of Texas has provided the appraisal district and information. So the task before us is to select, or to cast our votes, and I'm open for help to those of you that have been through this before or from our county attorney.
I think the previous, the idea was these folks were from across the spectrum of locations in the county, and the county wanted representatives from across that spectrum, and so I think the votes were essentially equalized for everybody on the list. Then you allow the other folks, the other entities, to maybe vote for the folks that live or work in their area, and so you kind of end up being a, you know, sum zero. You kind of just are awash with your votes. You could choose to do differently, but that's what I recall has been done previously.
And maybe I'm the one that gummed up the works, because all of the incumbents were talked to by Mark Benneke, and they were all willing to serve, but I had two additional names that I added to the list, and that's not to sway the commissioners, but the two names that were added to the list was Carol Garnett, who is a ranch owner, and I believe Carol's residence is down off of 2445, that area, and borders also along FM 1774. The other one that I talked to, and she said she'd be willing to serve, was Diana Westmoreland. I think most of y'all know Diana from her public participation, but she also has some background in real estate. She is retired, but she does have background in real estate and things of that sort. And Diana is off of Highway 105 between, I'll say Stonem and Navasota on the south side. That's where she lives, so that's kind of that area. Both Diana and Carol are kind of what I would call, well, not kind of what I would call, they're defined as rural landowners within the county. So I don't know all of the people on the board. I do know one, two, three of the others that were previously serving, and I'm not trying to bust anything up, I'm just giving us some additional choices.
Well, like he spoke to previously, what we would do is just take the number of votes we had and divide it among the candidates.
Among the five that we choose, but since they only need five, but there's seven on the list. Like I said, I'm the kind of the one that gummed it up or changed it, but, and I'm not saying any of the five that are currently on there aren't good candidates, I'm just giving you some additional options. You know, I kind of like to change things up on occasion, as you found out.
But you haven't spoken to any of the other people that were on there?
No, ma'am. They were confirmed by Mark Benneke, and that's what I asked him. I said, the ones that are currently serving, are they still in agreement to serve? And he said, yes, I've talked to all of them. And I said, okay, can I add additional names? And he, well, yes, you can. So I talked to these two ladies and asked would they be willing to serve, and both of them said yes, they would. So I submitted those. We, as a courts, approved those names to be put on this list, and that was submitted, but now we have an obligation to make the votes and get it back to the Tax Office, because they have to have it posted, registered, or whatever by the end of this year.
Do you have a suggestion?
Your memorandum, your memorandum from Mark to you indicates that you can cast your votes for one candidate or to as many as you want, so you don't have to pick five. You could put an equal number for seven. That's, I don't know if that was what you were questioning.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, well, previously, when there were five, we just did even number, the court did even number for each one unless there was one extra that somebody got with the coin flip or whatever. But this memorandum to you indicates that you can allot your, all of your votes to seven, divided by seven, and if you choose to do that.
Yeah.
I see that's what we do.
Yeah, I'm going to agree with that.
I have two that would be willing to divide 5,000, or whatever our vote is, by seven and allocate that amount to each one.
I would like to see some new members on there.
I have one commissioner like to see some new members on there. Commissioner Mallett, your thoughts?
They change periodically, it's just not all the time that they change. So I'm okay with seven.
Well, that would be a majority, so Commissioner, with your permission, will divide it by seven and allocate that amount to each one of the seven on the ballot.
Well, it comes out to like 203.57, so.
203 and how many left over?
Well, you've got seven there.
You need a motion in there?
I think it would be appropriate to have a motion. Let me see what our wording on the agenda is real quick.
It says resolution ballot, but I don't see a resolution.
Yeah, considering take action.
Yes, it is a resolution.
Yeah, we're going to consider take action on a resolution ballot, so this would be our resolution ballot, and this is the, we're still on the 13th.
Yes. Well, I'd like to make the motion that we accept the resolution and ballot for the election and appraisal district board of directors and take our votes and divide them equally amongst the candidates, seven candidates.
And could I add to that? If it won't divide equally, which we know it won't, do you want the extras to go to the two that you proposed, in the order that you proposed?
I would like that.
It'll just be a couple?
Yeah.
With the extra going to the two extra candidates we proposed.
If that meets with the approval of the court. Okay, so we have that motion. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Walker. I have a motion on Agenda 24 by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. So, Madam Auditor, you're good with numbers? You will designate?
It'll be $203, 203 per person, with Carol and Diane getting 205.
All right. And then, Carrie, I'll give that to you, and if you will, get that over to Mr. Benneke. We are now on Agenda Item Number, shouldn't we eliminate, shouldn't we limit the number of Agenda Items?
That's one we need to come back to.
No, we don't. 25. Discuss and, just, retract that comment. Discuss and determine when to use tax exempt status. This came up. Mary, in our office, we were having some conversation, and I know that you want us to use tax exempt vendors, and I understand that, but we had a situation where our tax exempt vendor was, I'm just going to say $15, and our, if we paid tax to a vendor, we were going to get the same item, tax included, for like $8. And, and maybe the distinction wasn't that much, but it was about a $5 difference.
Any vendor should accept our, any vendor should accept our tax exempt status. I mean, it's a matter of us.
Does Quill take our exempt, does Amazon take our exempt status?
Do the vendors have a choice? I don't think they have a choice.
They don't have a choice.
Well, it was on the phone holder for Andrew, and he told me, he said, Judge, if I go through our tax exempt vendor, it's this much, and he said, but I can buy it here for this much less, including tax.
I think it was eBay. Was it eBay?
I don't remember. Maybe it was. But then I went to my upper left-hand drawer, and I said, I don't use mine, will this fit yours? And he said it did, so that solved the problem. We didn't have to buy anything from anybody, but that won't be the last time we come up with that situation. So all vendors should accept our tax exempt status?
Yes, now, they are going to require us to send them a copy of it and fill out a W-9 for them, and that's, you know, that's not a problem. We do that anytime it's requested, anytime we have a new vendor. We have, we contact them, make them send us a W-9, and we send them back something, and they have to go online and do a 1295.
Okay.
And so, and that just lets us know that they're good with the state.
All right. Well, I'm good with that answer. I just wanted to make sure that we stay in compliance, but as we stay in compliance, it doesn't cost us extra monies to do so.
Right.
Okay. And then we're just concerned about having to get yelled at by your office, Madam Treasurer. You got, you got, you got the fear out there, so, all right.
That's good.
Commissioners, do you have any other thoughts or comments on that?
I have a comment that I want to make. When I was working for the state, we bought through the state contracts, and they had, you know, you didn't have to go through bids or anything. I was purchasing a skill saw, and I ordered one, and they said it's going to take six months to get it. These vendors are supposed to have this on inventory when you order. I went to Lowe's and got the same saw for about $70 cheaper. So we put in a policy of credit cards to allow the local principals and administrators to purchase locally with a credit card and save money.
But Lowe's would recognize the tax exempt.
Sure, sure.
Okay, okay. And I think we're okay with that, right?
That's right.
Okay, fair enough. Any other comments? Hearing them, we'll go to Agenda Item 26, Discuss, Review, and Approve Some or All Items Proposed by PGAL Regarding the Proposed County Justice Center That Is Currently Being Designed for Grimes County. Commissioners, I believe each of you might have a hard copy in front of you. Mr. Cox, do you have one?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay. Commissioner Mallett, do you have one? Okay. And I'll, since this is my Agenda Item, let me give reason for having Michael from PGAL presenting to the group, is because I know we've had a building committee throughout this project. I have no concern that the building committee hasn't given their best effort all the way through. I just felt we were at a point where all the commissioners and the county judge need to be involved in this final decision-making, and also on some of the areas of options or things we need to be taking a look at, that we all have input at this point, because in the past, we've had Commissioner Mallett and Commissioner Cox serving on the building committee representing the court, but because we didn't make an open meetings agenda for every meeting, that did not allow my presence or Commissioner Dobianski or Commissioner Walker. So it's not a lack of trust or competence, it's just a little bit of a lack of information.
Move it closer.
Can you put it on, can you put it on there?
I think it'd be too close.
We've got that table that.
We need a roller.
I'm going to get you one. I might have one. There you go.
I think it's going to happen in somebody's yard, spray paint, had an ant bed on it.
And at some point, we need to officially name this building. I don't know if it's the Grimes County Justice Center, or Justice and Business Center, or...
Administrative.
Administrative.
Administrative Justice and Leadership.
Like I say, we need to figure out at some point what we're going to name this.
What do you want to do?
I'll, I'll introduce myself first. I'm Michael Lloyd with PGAL Architects, and if I may.
Absolutely. And if you will, try to speak up enough so that this microphone here will pick up your comments.
Certainly. So this is a briefing of where we are on the design and bid and procurement of the courthouse justice center. So this presentation is to give a general overview of the design features, as well as the bid process of where we are, as well as some details about some of the bid items that were discussed. So this is a front view of the courthouse, looking for a parking lot. The main entry element right here is the secure entry, and then the, the non-secure entry is on the right-hand side.
And the sheriff's office is in that clump of trees on the left-hand side of the picture. Okay, just to orient those in the audience. Oh, there you go.
So here is a general overview. I think we've seen this before, we took some artistic license in the background.
Love the mountains.
A little hillier than we have in the current existing, but this shows the jail and the courthouse with the parking lot. You'll see the, the area to the right, open field for future expansion. Sorry, Ms. Walker.
No problem.
Here's another front view. So this is a floor plan, and the different departments shown are the color coordination, color key there. So as a reminder, there, there's the main functions, there's a county court at law, there's a district court, and then there's a multi-purpose court, which will handle Commissioners Court, grand juries, and JP. So it's a shared, multi-purpose court. There's a central corridor down the center that is the secure side, and the corridor on the right is the non-secure side. So generally, the, on the right-hand side, if you're coming to the treasurer, or the district clerk, or the county clerk, you would come into the building unscanned, or if you're coming to a court case, you would go through security.
Can I, can I just ask, when you look at this building committee manly, why is the district attorney's footprint so big?
That was the space they requested.
Kind of staff-driven.
Staff, the amount of staff they had in there, as well as areas for, I guess, secured storage for evidence.
And it also has crime victims in there.
Okay, so Ms. Brenda's in there with her business? Okay. But there's no probation or anything in there?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, I think a couple, I think a couple more offices were put in there for the possibility of growth in that office.
Yeah, there's, there's some modest growth in all of these. So for the floor finishes, there was a question about what finishes go where. Generally speaking, the yellow you see is all porcelain tile floor finishes, which are in the public areas, which would be easier to maintain. The blue and the dark blue are luxury vinyl tile and VCT, and the gray would be carpet. The red is the holding areas, which is epoxy resin flooring, and just the plain white would be sealed concrete in rooms like a mechanical room, for example.
When you, in the carpeted areas, is that big sheet carpet, or is that like two-by squares, or what is that?
We have carpet tile planned for, for those finishes, and there's, and the palette on the left is the, the finishes that were presented to the court review committee.
And then the, you said, what is it, luxury tile?
Luxury vinyl tile is in the high-traffic areas.
Which is which one in the?
The lighter blue, which is the corridors. So generally speaking, that would be in the corridors to the court suites and the, and the DA's office. Then on the public entry side, all the lobbies come into the vehicle clerk's office or tax assessor or treasurer.
What is in the city hall, the city of Navasota, is that luxury tile, or is that?
They have terrazzo, I believe, in their, their main lobby.
Upstairs, in the offices?
I think they have a mixture of carpet.
It's a gray tile? Okay.
So those finishes.
Could you change in luxury vinyl to enduring vinyl or something? You know, I can just see some taxpayer, why in the heck they put luxury vinyl in there?
Well, I guess the name is part marketing, so it's, it's not enough. It's cheaper than porcelain.
That's somebody trying to sell it, we're trying to defend it.
Maybe I should say vinyl tile, but it's a, it's a vinyl tile plank that is on the bottom right there, and the material looks like, looks like wood.
So it's a plank?
From a maintenance standpoint, Al, did you have any comments or input?
I would like to see less carpet and more ceramic tile, because of wear purposes.
Sure.
Are you saying ceramic tile or vinyl tile?
Ceramic.
Ceramic. And where are the places that have the ceramic? Is it the yellow?
The yellow. Porcelain tile. Generally, the lobby and the bathrooms.
That's, that's quite a lot. I mean, where they are going to have it.
Well, the light gray areas in the courtrooms, what are those?
Carpet.
That's carpet. And the dark gray?
It's two different types of carpet. There's, there's two different colors of carpet.
Okay.
So it distinguishes the difference. So generally, the court is a different carpet than the offices.
Where's the parquet, the wood?
That parquet is actually a porcelain tile.
Oh, it is?
And that is going down the center. It's, you can see the squares kind of faintly down the center of the yellow.
Okay, so it's porcelain, but it's made to look like wood?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just to help you out, these squares going up here would be for that.
Now, I do recall there being a lot of discussion earlier in the budgeting hearing about if you, over at the other building we had, we had a lot of hard surfaces and echoing, you know, when Judge Lawson came in, you could hear everything because of so much terrazzo tile in the building. So if the carpet is there for sound?
It certainly helps with the acoustics over a hard surface. So the, our last committee meeting, it was decided that for the offices, the group wanted carpet for their offices, except for the leading spaces into their offices would be electric vinyl tile.
Miss the floor?
Excuse me, I'd just like to make a comment about the courtrooms. We have AG court, correct me if I'm wrong, once a month, and we're going to pick up gum, we're going to pick up, I mean, they can trash out a courtroom, and if it's going to be carpet, it's going to be hard, and when it's rainy and muddy, they, they don't know anything about it.
I've said it all before, Diane.
Oh, wow. That's just amazes me.
I've said this about carpet, and it fell on deaf ears. I mean, I'm telling you what should be in there, because I'm the person that takes care of it.
Well, it looks like, looks like in your Commissioners courtroom, is there two flooring, two types of flooring?
Yes, ma'am, so the front seating area behind the court rail would be carpet, and then the seating area in the back is the vinyl tile.
Does that help?
Yes. Where the, you're talking about the gallery, where the?
Correct, and, and the idea there was that.
In the Commissioners courtroom, right?
Yeah. Would it help any of the other ones?
It's all carpet.
What's the cost difference?
They're about the same, but it's, not too much difference, it's really a preference. So carpet in the courtrooms, all the courtrooms we do, they're carpet for acoustics and aesthetics. And we picked in the Commissioners' room, since that's a multi-purpose room, that it may be used for different purposes, that the backside behind the rail would be the LBT.
Is that usually where your AG is held?
No.
No, it's in the district courtroom, but if the gallery, where all the people, well, actually, they, they all set up in that inside area too, so.
So you could take the same approach as we did on the Commissioners' room, put the gallery in.
It would, it would help.
Where the general public are.
It would help, but they set up three or four attorneys in the inside area, and they bring the clients in to discuss their situation with those, so they, there's a lot of walking in there too, so.
Haven't they generally dumped their gum and cleaned, dumped their gum and cleaned their shoes by the time they get out of the gallery up to the attorneys? No?
And there's baby bottles and food, stuff that they've gotten out of the vending machine, their papers, and they're messy.
They have, they have no respect for themselves, or they would pick up after themselves.
I'm glad I didn't say that.
Okay, well, let's, let's keep, let's keep the discussion going.
The next slide shows where we have some, some wall finishes. So if you look on the bottom, those are the courtroom elevations, and where we have wood walls, so the wall behind the judge is pictured on the left, and it's 85% wood, oak wood. The side elevation you see on the right, there's... The side elevation you see on the right, there's a bottom wainscote, which is wood, and then vinyl wall covering, and then paint above. The bands are rails, so it's, and the back is same wainscote. There's acoustic panels on the back wall, so it doesn't reverb. But we try to take a modest approach. We don't put wood over the entire walls, try to be budget-conscious. But then, we also wanted to have typical finishes you would expect to see in a courtroom that represents the, and the duty of the court. So that, that's the finishes we've got in the bid. The elevation on the top is looking down the corridor, public corridor to the courtrooms. And what you'll see is, there's a wood base, a vinyl wall covering, a wainscote, then there's a chair rail, and then paint above. And then just at the entry areas, we've, at the doors, we've put in wood panel in there. So certainly, again, try to be budget-conscious, it's not all wood, it's not all marble like federal courts you might see that we've done in federal courts. So we try to be restrained, but also make it a nice, nice space for you. So within the base bid, there is furniture that's provided as part of the general contractor's bid. And the idea was that the base bid furniture would be so that your courtroom on opening day can be fully functioning. So that furniture includes the jury seating, the public pews, the attorney tables and chairs, the judge's chair, the clerk's chairs, as well as the jury deliberations, tables and chairs. So that's for the three courtrooms. It also includes the two high-density storage spaces you see for the clerk spaces, which are pictured in the white rectangles. So that value, you see, it's about $300,000 of furniture. And that's bid off the state contract pricing.
When you say state pricing, is that TDCJ, or is that somebody else?
No, that's state contracts that, I think KI is the brand.
Oh, okay.
We do have these drawings out to the jail commission for pricing to get an alternate price, and you can make a decision if that's the approach you want to go. There are certain aspects of having them on board or not that you need to think about. But those numbers should be back shortly, I would think. So this is the site plan. It includes landscaping, irrigation, and some seating areas. We've got landscaping around the courthouse, and we also have landscaping around the perimeter of the swales. You'll see there's an L-shaped hedge between the courthouse and the jail to help block the views, so if you're sitting in, specifically we put it there for the jury deliberations, we didn't want them looking out at the jail and kind of get some privacy from those rooms. So that's what that hedge is. There are some darker green rectangles, or some low-scale ornamental trees. And in front of the entry steps are more shrubs. We tried to keep trees away from the building, so the leaves wouldn't get on the roof, and Al wouldn't have to deal with getting leaves off the roof. There are perimeter, perimeter trees. There is a seating area between the, on the front, between the jail and the courthouse. And then there's a seating area at the back for the staff that has some papers. So we find it's important on these public places to give a place for the public, somewhere they can sit if they're not clogging up the lobby, if they have a place to go without going too far away from the building. It's a nice little place for them to sit. And that's included, and I've got some breakdowns of that. So these are the numbers. So if you look on the left column, we had a commissioner's court meeting on 8/14, and I presented some numbers, some budget numbers, where we had a, the base bid estimated $10.5 for the building, what we thought the furnishings would cost the courtroom furniture at $300, miscellaneous equipment at $200,000, so the subtotal budget was $11. Then it puts some contingency in there, for other costs you may have a 1.1. So looking at a $12.1 budget, that was a number we were, we were thinking of coming up to the bids. We had some ad alternates of $225 budgeted for the road. The base bid does not have the road extension connecting up to the highway. So the low bid...
And that's the connection to 149?
Yes, sir. So the low bid base cost, you take up the furniture's at $10 million and change, the furnishing just shy of $300,000. So the low bid contractor was at $10.3 million. Their ad alternate cost for the road is $125,000, so all in, $10,455,000 is the low bid. So the right-hand column shows some variances of where we were looking at total project cost and the low bid. So the bottom, I've given you some benchmark numbers, so you have a feel for some other projects that are like in nature, of where this project came in. So Fort Bank courthouse was completed in 18, it was a very large courthouse. And that came in about 307 a foot. If you look, where the low bid is at $322. The Belair policing courts, we just bid that, that came in at $295, and that Conroe Public Safety Building is similar, came at $350,000. So I think we're in the right range for a project of this nature. If you went to go build a replica courthouse with ornate exterior and domes and things like that, you would, you would see a project cost of $400 and up. So this would be the price range, I think it's come in to where we expected a project of this nature to be.
I'm not understanding your variance column.
So it's, the left-hand column is where we talk about some budget numbers. And it's the difference between what the low bid is and what the budget is.
Okay, that's the difference, okay.
Yes, ma'am. So these are, this is the bid tab. We received seven bids, and the company names are in the second column. Their base bid cost, then the ad alternate number one, which is the road. There was an ad alternate number two for building controls, but it was a low number, and we're not gonna accept that. Ad alternate number two is our last discussion. So that shows you the total cost of where the bids came in. It was a two-step process, so the first process, or the first step, was to turn in a number, a bid sheet. And if you see, that's all the numbers. The second was a qualification package. And the bottom two contractors did not turn in a qualification package. Presumably, they looked at where their number was and said, "We're not gonna get it," so they didn't submit their quals the next day. So in the right-hand column, three firms were interviewed, Collier Construction, Madison Construction, and Labor Commercial. The review committee has scored those, and I'll leave that committee to discuss that. So that's a bid tab. So there's been discussions about other costs that the court needs to consider for this building. Work with Greg Cannon on the top, the top column, I mean, the top bracket there, technology costs, and what you should budget. So these, these technology costs would be paid directly by Grimes County. It's not a part of the bid. So you need to, and this would be, I think, traditional in many cases, so that you don't get, you don't have to get a markup from the contract on this, you can buy direct. So with the new building, you're gonna need new telephones. And that cost includes licenses, the hardware, the software. And it's, once you change, Greg was explaining to me, once you change the phones in one building, as a countywide, you need to change the other phones. So he's identified 138 phones, and that costs $160. I think in all of these, the $160 and the MDF number, that's his high-side number. I think he's in discussions that some of these may go down. But for budget purposes, this is what Greg asked me to put in the spreadsheet. So at the front entry, the sheriff or the constables will have the walkthrough metal detectors and x-ray machines, and those are some budget numbers. There would be two of each, and that should be budgeted, unless you're gonna bring existing equipment over to be used. The servers, Greg has existing servers, they would be relocated. There's gonna be some additional licenses that go into the cameras and the wireless access points. So the $30,000 Greg wanted to put in for a licensing budget. And then the MDF, IDF network switches and RAPs, RAPs are wireless access points of the Wi-Fi. That's the figure he's got right now. And again, Greg is looking to lower that. And then server UPS is uninterrupted power source. It would be, we do have a generator, but you want a UPS that would bridge the gap between base power and emergency power, so that when the generator clicks on, there's a period, the UPS provides an unimperventable power source. So those are costs that you need to budget for when you're looking at total project cost.
So when you say total project cost, we need to add $411,000 and $318,000 to the $10,000?
The $411,000 is costs that you certainly were gonna need to spend for your technology purposes.
Right, okay.
The next one, complete new department furniture, that's, that's an optional cost.
Okay.
Right now, we have, excuse me, the furniture in the base bid for the courtrooms. The rest of the departments could bring their existing. Or I've got a budget here for $318,000 for other furniture. If you want to replace all the furniture and get brand new furniture for all the departments, that's $318,000, that's just, that's without installation. And generally, installation would be another 10% to 12% on top of that. So if it's $300,000, you add 30. But it's not an all-or-nothing on that $318,000. You may go by department by department and say, "Well, this one department has new stuff, they like their chairs," or what have you. This is an all-in number, so it's a discretion by departments to see what furniture they need and which they could relocate with. So this would require certainly more discussions. But I wanted to give you a number, if you want, it's a budget on the furniture. And this is something that you don't have to decide right now. You could wait in the middle of the construction period to see how you feel about your budget six months from now, and then you can elect to order the furniture or not, so that it's ready for opening day.
I guess what I'm doing in my head is we got, we as a county say we have about $12 million that we can allocate to this project without having to borrow money. So if we put $12 million at the top, and then we take out $10,000, $330,000 off of that, and then whatever we decide on, if we did another driveway, we take that $125,000 off if you went with the first bid. And I'm just, I'm just working down in my head until we get to, that's it, we're done, there's no more money left. Or you make some decisions at that point, we need another $200,000. Where's $200,000 in what we've spent? What are we willing to swap for swap? Because I mean, if you look at landscaping and irrigation, it's $192,000. I, when I put, when I built my home, I put in landscaping and I put the irrigation in, which was, now I gotta take care of it, so I've dug it out mostly. But I've left the, I've left the irrigation to keep the foundation moist, so I don't have to worry about cracking. Is that irrigation and insurance to keep a foundation of that size to keep it from cracking, or are those two different items?
Well, on this project, our soil was bad, if you remember, and we're scraping on it, bad soil off the hill.
Right.
We're doing drill, piers, going down to good soil, and then it's a structural slab. So our slab should be, it's connected to terra firma down there, it's not reacting to a slab on grade movement.
Yeah, okay. So you're not worried about a cracked slab 10 years from now? Whether you have irrigation or not?
Not with a structural slab. So this landscaping number is, Mr. Collier, who's, my department constructionist, is in the audience, and I was allowed to ask them for some, where some of their numbers came in on a couple items. So this is what's in the base bid for landscaping. So it's broken out to the planting, 130, the irrigation, the seating and hardscape, the areas. So generally speaking, if, talking to my landscape architect, if you're looking to value engineer something, and you wanted to just have, maybe you're bang for your buck for the landscaping that's around the courthouse. You see there's a lot of perimeter trees.
Yeah.
So if you're looking for a value engineering option, you could get rid of all the trees around the perimeter, and those have an irrigation, just a bubbler drip system on the trees that doesn't have spray. So you could take a more modest approach, and that's something we could put together a value engineering package and ask the selected contractor to come back with a credit. But I think the one thing we certainly want to keep is a hedge buffer between the courthouse and the jail. And then you would need to decide which you're comfortable with, with maintenance, if you're gonna use some Todd's guys to maintain, I don't think you'd do that.
Well, we have, we have access to the diversion crew currently, but, you know, four years down the road, you might have a different sheriff goes, "My, my folks aren't gonna do that."
Right.
And I mean, and I guess the concern, under the trees on that outside perimeter, is that grass, which is then something that needs to be mowed. You know, it all looks nice and pretty, but at the end of the day, if the diversion crew doesn't do it, then we're gonna have to either hire Al more people, or we're gonna have to contract, have a contractor come in and do it, and...
Right, there's certainly gonna be maintenance costs on a project of this nature, and it's just what you're comfortable with. But there's somewhere between Venetian gardens and zero that maybe is appropriate for the project.
What is the Mason, where did I see that? Masonry bond, Mason?
So...
Masonary bond.
Common bond.
Common bond.
So if you look in the top right corner, there was, during the interview process, there was a question about the common bond pattern we had designed. Is it, is there a way you can economize that by just having running bond? So common bond, every six course, you cut a brick in half, and it's given a pattern. So it's a... So it's a very Texas historic type brick pattern you would see. In the old days, when it was a load-bearing brick wall, that brick would get turned back and would tie to the other wall. So it's a, it's just a decorative brick pattern.
And, and the cost on that was 11,000?
11,000. Mr. Collier said that that would be the value of that if you elected to not have the common, common bond and just have a running bond. So it's, it's relatively, the big picture thing is a small number. So this last slide, sorry, it's small, but this is a, if all departments got new furniture, this is a price breakdown by department. And again, as we said before, we, maybe you think about this later and figure out what furniture you really need. Do you want new tables and new chairs? I think certainly some of the public counters where we have an exchange counter, the chairs behind where, if I was doing a, coming here, the chair that you would have would probably be new to be the right height and appropriate. So things like that would be something to think about. There's a, there's a big conference room in the, in the tax assessor's suite in the back that you might get a right-sized conference room table and chairs for that to make sure it fits the purpose. So that's a detail, and again, this is, this is all optional. And that's the, the last slide.
So in your furniture, in your base bid, I'll just take, for example, the county court at law. It says attorney clerk chairs on rollers, and you have eight. Is that the number proposed?
That would respond to the floor plan and how many staff positions there would be.
So I just heard you say if, if somebody was behind the counter, and the chair needed to be the appropriate height, is it included in this base bid?
No. But you have some of those encounters right now, so let's see what you could take best chance with you.
Where will we have them counted? Them are regular office. They have a desk behind that counter. That's a regular desk.
So they, they stand at those desks? I mean, at the counters, pretty much?
No. No, they, they sit at their desk. The counter is their desk.
Were you by license plate?
They just reach up.
Oh, okay. I thought they were standing.
When we were talking furniture, we were talking about mainly just furniture courtrooms.
I'm only in there once a year.
So this is the, the courtrooms, because it just said county court at law. I didn't know if that was the office.
What you're looking at is, is optional for the whole, every department. That's, he's just giving us a price of what it would cost. That's not in the bid.
Furniture in base bid?
Oh, you looked at furniture, but I thought you were looking at your last.
That, that right there?
Yes, yes.
So it says county court at law. Is that the courtroom or is that the?
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry, misunderstood. That's the courtroom. So there's a judge chair, there's attorney and clerk chairs, there's fixed jury chairs. There's one jury that's an ADA chair that's on a fixed base. The tables, the attorney tables are electrified so that attorney comes up with a laptop they can plug in. There's a podium. And the public pews. And then some conference tables behind, and then the chair. So again, the idea was that on opening day, you've got a fancy courtroom.
So when we pick a contractor to do this, because this isn't my area of expertise. If one, we pick a contractor to do this, and we start making changes to what's been submitted versus what we have here in front of us, that's what y'all classify as change orders, yes?
That's correct. It could be an add or a he got.
Okay, so is it standard procedure when you do a change order that it's going to be yea so much more than if it was in the original plan? If it's an addition? I mean, and I don't know what I'm talking about, if something's $200,000, and we go, okay, we want to add that to the contract. Is it going to be 2,000 and 200,000, 240,000 dollars because there's a add-on to that? A 10% add-on?
No, it'll be, we'll negotiate the price and, and that addition will be added to it.
But how, how negotiable are contractors, once they've got the contract, at helping us with the cost?
They'll, they'll give us an estimate, and we can decide whether we want to do it or not.
Okay. Would we have the option to use somebody else as an other subcontractor, or do you? No? So we're, okay.
You could, you could contractually take it out of the scope and then...
Well, I'm not trying to make this difficult. I'm just, we all know, sitting here, looking at this, there are going to be some changes along the way. There's got to be. We're not that good, I don't think. And if we make those changes, are we going to be paying for those changes at a premium?
Well, those changes are going to be owner-driven. And the design, if there's a design flaw or something, it would, it would be coming from us.
Understand, yeah.
You know, it's, you know, we bid a lot for landscaping. I, I agree, we should probably kick back some of that and a little bit, keep it around the building maybe, or something like that. And, but that can be a price. We've got some prices on what, you know, some, that would be. And that could be, that could be a change order deduction. But as far as, you know, just, most of these change orders will be coming from us. Or any change orders will be coming from us.
So I think generally speaking, your prices after the fact would probably cost more because the spirit of competition at bid day is gone.
Right.
But that said, looking at the contractors we've interviewed, it gets into the contractor's perspective and how they want to treat their owners. And I think a reputable contractor will want to turn in reputable numbers because it's their reputation as well. So maybe, maybe Mr. Collier could speak to how his philosophy is on change orders. But I would think from what we, what we know about them, they're, they're going to look to treat you fair. And I think hopefully that will go downstream to the subcontractors.
One of the issues I'm not happy with is electrical heating in the building. And I've, I've done some research with several entities in the county, in Alisoa School District, Anderson School District. And the Anderson superintendent met with their project manager who built the new school here and said that he has never seen any information that states that electrical is more efficient than heat, gas heating. Anderson is using gas heating. Alisoa's using gas heating. I, I just, and from my building experience, I, in my experience in, with heating and, and electrical, I, I just don't see electrical being more efficient.
Well, it's, it's not more efficient, but it's that upfront cost of where you're going to get your payback is, you know, if it's, I mean, they gave us an estimate of 56 years, and even if they're way off, I mean, we're still talking, you know, 25, 30-year payback on that, even if they're half.
The, the information commissioner that we were given in that last workshop when he was talking about the efficiency of electricity versus gas. Correct me if I'm wrong, but he said the BTUs generated by electricity was greater than what was generated by the natural gas.
Well, he was talking about natural gas versus propane.
Well, and I looked at propane versus natural gas, and propane burned at a higher BTU per amount than natural gas. And both of those gases were more BTUs per, however they figured it, than electricity. And I, I felt a little bit duped by that workshop.
He spoke, I think, what he talked about on the electricity side was you can, used to, you either had them all on or all off. But these are staged where you can turn different stages. They depended on the need. But I don't think he talked about the... Yeah, but I don't think that's what he said as far as the efficiency of that BTU versus that.
Exactly what he said.
I didn't, I didn't catch the BTU.
It was on that paper that he...
The paper that he gave us. And see, I'm all into value buying. And he's, I'm going to say he's the expert, I'm not, but just my little bit of research that I did, you're going to get more BTU energy out of propane than you are natural gas. And both of those are more efficient than out of the electricity, which led me to believe that his 56-year payback, or 53, whatever that number was, was misskewed. You know, and if, if it's going to take us 25 years for a payback, all right, we might want to say that's still too long. But I don't, I'm not saying he gave us false information. I'm just saying what little I know and what research I did, his information to me didn't prove out. And that was the, I forget his name, your DVR.
Ashkar with DVR. So if, I want to make sure that you're confident in your decision on this. So if you want me to hire another engineer to, to validate these numbers, I'll do that on my own dime. And you can do a return on investment. And if you want to look, what you also have to do is do a sketch, some drawings to, to do the boiler system.
So you're mechanical?
And get that priced by, by the contractor and see what the hard costs are. And then get a new operating cost.
Is Collier here? Anybody from Collier? The, the number that we got for the electrical heat versus the boiler heat was about 230,000, 200,000, over $200,000 difference. And I know I'm probably catching you off guard, but does that sound reasonable, that electrical heat on installation and purchase, et cetera, et cetera? It's going to be a $200,000 difference?
That's not uncommon for there being more for the, because of the piping they have to do with it.
Well, I know more, but I mean, is it, and I don't know what, did we get a, a cost on what the electrical installation was?
No.
They put that in the...
Yes, he took that out.
They put that in the, I think they put 30,000 in there for the strip heat.
Right, he did.
So the whole electrical for heating this new facility is going to go 30,000 if we go electrical. But it's going to be 200-plus thousand if we do the boiler.
I think the difference was 230,000.
Yeah, okay.
And let me tell you why that is. It's because of the water piping.
Okay.
So all they're doing is running electric wire. And then we're plugging it into a heat strip. We have to run heating coils, and we have to run water to it.
Okay.
That's where your cost comes from. It's not because of the, the boilers. It's like, because I, we just purchased one, $26,000.
Okay.
Okay, so it's the, it's the redrawing, it's the running of the water pipes, and it's the heat coil that's going to be in the box. That's the difference. That's where you're getting it. The 56-year payback? The only thing I can argue with that is, how long is it going to take you to pay this building back? I mean, if you're going to look at everything that's payback cost, so look at everything that way, not just one item. Because, go ahead.
I was going to say, I understand where you're going with that. I like to see numbers. I mean, in talking with other people, I think that would give us some basis to go on, because I'm hearing so many different stories of how this could play out. He's saying at, on his cost, your cost, you would have somebody else come in, give an estimate or breakdown on that, and let us look at the numbers, because I'm, I'm hearing two different things.
But sure, you did that once. He's hired an engineering firm to do that already.
Well, he said you didn't feel like you had confidence in him, so he would get someone else.
So why don't we get to choose our own third party?
Well, we may do that too.
But that's...
But I'm saying we need numbers.
I agree. I agree with you. Numbers, I'll never beat electric upfront. Boiler will always beat electric out the back. Your monthly...
Some discrepancies in that. You know, I'm just saying, I've heard discrepancies. I'm not saying I know one way or another, whether it's truth or not, but if I see factual evidence.
Well, there's got to be a reason your school districts are going away from it.
But I'm just saying. Everybody talking about it, I, you know, I'm hearing from all of these professionals, but maybe if I sit down and look at the numbers or the cost breakdown, because we even talked about what City of Navasota averages, you know, on their heating. But you said they have natural gas, if I heard you correctly. We're talking propane. And then I've talked to some electrical people, and then we've heard from your guy. So I think there's going to be some benefit to looking at the numbers. We've got some numbers, but they're not based on propane, you know? They're based on natural gas. If I make no mistake, that's what I read. But what I'm saying is, there may be other alternatives on how to do that. And having a professional outside of any of us may be guiding us in that direction. But I, I think if he was willing to pay at his cost to bring in another professional, it's not our cost, Al, it's his cost.
You're going to get the same book.
Well...
I mean, common sense tells you that.
Well, common sense tells me I need to look at numbers. I'd like to see it on paper.
I agree with that.
What, what I heard from the last meeting, and, and now I've heard possible leakage with pipes. You know, I've heard, and, and then we, we're also constrained by numbers eventually overall in this project. Yes, we have a large wish, wish list of everything we'd like to see happen in this project. But at somewhere, at some point, we have to make cuts. We have to be efficient with what we're working with. And we talk about the upfront cost of an additional 200,000 and the payback of anywhere from 35 to 50-something years. It doesn't make sense, you know? Just look at it again, or have someone look at it for us.
So I, I think this equation is essentially what this is, is an equation. Because I think we can all agree that propane or gas boilers are more efficient than electric. That's a fact. We're all in agreement.
And your DVR guy admitted that. He was just saying for the configuration of the building, he recommended the electrical.
Certainly. That's, that's what he said. So we're now to a point where to make the decision is what is the return on investment period? I think that's where we are. And what is that delta? So the way we can do that, we can project with a lot more accuracy is what your propane costs are. And now Al's got some good numbers. So we can figure out what the boilers are, what typical boiler we would buy, how much they would burn, and what, how much propane we could project that they could burn for a year.
And use the correct wattage per kilowatt, not Houston's. Where Houston gets to choose their electrical company. Here in the rural community, it's not six to eight. Where Houston gets to choose their electrical company. Here in the rural community, it's not six to eight cents.
Yeah.
It's 10 to 11.
Yeah.
So use the rural community number, not Houston's number.
So we can fine tune the equation and give you a better ROI number so you can base your decision.
So, so we could, not knowing what, if we're gonna do boilers or heat strips, we can still move forward on everything else for the most part, with the understanding we're gonna take another look at that.
Correct. If we're moving forward with this contractor, we, we need to make some decisions pretty quick, because that would impact, uh, the equipment they need to purchase and meet their schedule obligations.
Well, I'm hoping they can throw a shovel full of dirt by the end of this year anyway, regardless. He manages me, he doesn't. I've got a small shovel.
So would you like for him to?
I, I'd like you to give us, since I dis, since I disagree, and not just me, but we don't have a consensus of agreement on what DVR said about the heat strip. If you're willing to give us another look at that, I'd, I'd like to see another look at the, the boilers versus the heat strips. And I think taking into consideration those that are, have experience with the heat strips and now they're converting over to the boiler system.
And I can, I can give you a list of some, I mean, firms we've worked, worked with and once you pick and I can let them write, uh, a letter to state that they're looking at this objectively and have no bias to, to me whatsoever. Let the math speak for itself.
Well, okay, but would we get the same realistic information if whoever we award this contract to? Are they qualified to do that type of research or is that not their area of expertise?
I think where Collier's mechanical contractor can help is with the cost of a boiler system. So together, we're gonna have to know what the hard costs are to offset the payback. So we, we're gonna have to create some kind of scope of work, like mechanical contractor for price.
It says narrative.
With a narrative and some, some boiler selection. They've got, they've got the mechanical plans. They know how many DAB boxes that they're gonna have to go to, um, so.
Just so you know, this is something we go through all the time. I mean, this is commonplace, almost every project. In fact, really every project for the last 10, 15 years, we have to sit down and discuss the, uh, scope of the work and, and, uh, initial meeting and there, there are some things that come up, we can price, uh, or, or credits. Either way, a lot of times if it comes in as form of value in here. But, uh, there, just to address some of your questions about the engineer. There is an allowance in the project, an owner's contingency allowance inside of our contract rights in our bid. Uh, $200,000 and the markup on any of those items is zero, because we already have the project marked up in our bid. So anything that comes within that 200,000 is a zero markup. Beyond that, it's, it's up to three and a half, in the range of three and a half to four percent is our fee. What came up in, in, uh, in the interview is that, uh, in, in the past, uh, we, we gave them a few dozen, I think, examples of projects where at the end of the, at the end of the project, we actually gave money back to the owner of unused contingency funds instead of a chain, instead of an ad chain door. That's our reputation. Uh, now that being said, if you decide to add gas or, you know, something like that, it's a different beginning point. The other thing is that came up in the interview and I'll carry this with the court. Subcontractors we have on this project, uh, a number of them that were requested in an interview have worked with us for 20 and 30 years, most of them 30 years. And I consider to be very honest, if I was honest, I didn't get. They're from Brenham, uh, Montgomery County, around this area. In addition to that, we have, we do a lot of business with local subcontractors and vendors here and have been in the past and we've done a bit of that for our pricing as well. So, you know, I would just commit to saying that if you have any questions, if you're discussing it, we'll be there. Always there.
I appreciate your comments and I appreciate Mike's presentation, but, and as you say, you do this on a regular basis. Well, we haven't built a courthouse in 125 years. So, you know, we, I, all these questions and, and our commissioner Mallett, you know, he's, he's in that field and he has a better understanding and I think he's done a great job of getting us to where we're at. And just some of those finer details that we need to be a part of and help make some decisions and, you know, go back to the landscaping where all that sounds nice and good. If, I have a ranch property and my theory is if we don't eat it, we don't raise it. So I saw live oaks and those kind of things. I'd rather have pecan trees and peach trees, go pick them at breakdown. That's another whole different story, but do you, do you even want, do you even want those because of the maintenance that is gonna be anticipated taking care of it? Because as I say right now, we have a wonderful sheriff who lets us use part of the crew that he, he houses during the week and they mow for free and that kind of thing. But if we got a, a different sheriff, and eventually we will, uh, he might not be so lenient and gracious in giving us a diversion crew to do some of this maintenance. And then I know Mr. Peter's gonna come back and say, hey, you guys built it, you wanna take care of it? I need two more people inside and one more person outside. We're gonna, uh-uh. So we're not just looking at getting this project done today, but taking care of this project for the next 125 years. Rather long. Those are my thoughts. Sir?
We, we commit to being team players, to working out any, any, uh, things you wanna exercise, as y'all wanna do. We're, we're willing to do that to try to help to get it right to start with.
And y'all love Washington County, right?
Yes.
And I know your judge well, so. Weber's here? You're with Weber?
Yes, sir.
'Cause I don't think the decision has been made other than we got three top candidates. Is that correct?
We have to review the rankings.
Okay. Alright, so I guess I've said all I should've said. Commissioners?
Well, I'm, it, I'm just kind of at odds. I don't know really what we're, what direction we're going. Are we making decisions on some of these issues today or what are we making issue, uh, decisions later or after we discuss with the contractor? I mean, what, what's the?
I don't, I don't know what the exact answer is, other than I do know that the next item on the agenda is for us to make a decision between number one, two, and three, based on the interviews from the building committee. And then we've at least heard from Collier. I don't know, Weber Construction, uh, if you have anything additional to say or comments along the lines of what Collier has said or how you work with clients?
Yeah. I think all of general contractors, reputable general contractors do the best they can to ensure that the client gets what they paid for.
Okay.
And on a fair basis, and Collier, I'm sure is no different than, than what we do as well, which we do exactly the same thing.
Okay. Thank you, sir. So Commissioner, to answer your question, I, most of my questions have been answered of the reservations that I had, you know, the, the idea on the different brick pattern, uh, carpet versus vinyl, I love the, I say I love, I like the floor layout of where the high-traffic areas are and what y'all are doing. And if the price is essentially the same between carpet and that vinyl, we can make the decision a little bit later. Do we want those courtrooms, the front part carpet and the back part vinyl? Do we want it all carpet as it's laid out to be? We've got time to make those decisions over the next month or two. I don't know how quickly, uh, the contractors will be buying those materials, but.
So I think we're at a point where do you want to start negotiations with a selected contractor? So I think, is that the?
I think the answer to that is yes.
Demotion that you're contemplating?
On the next agenda.
Well, the next item is consider and take action to select an offer for construction of the County Justice Center and discuss, negotiate, approve a contract and any modifications there too, so.
Okay, so I think in that process and there is a, in the, in the bid documents, there was a, an example contract that would be used to start negotiations. It's an NIA document. The county attorney has looked back.
Correct.
Um, that would be a starting form for negotiations and I guess in this negotiation pay, period, you could, um, get some pricing either ahead of the contract being signed or, or after it. But you could sign a letter and intent to negotiate with, with the contractor to, so you can get some real-world bid prices, especially on this boiler versus, uh, electric situation.
And you are gonna move forward with getting us a list of people that are companies that would be good for that? Al, would you be okay to pick the one that, that gives us a, a review on that?
I think Chad should be that. He's, he's a really.
Alright, that's fine. And I guess we've discussed 26 to enough. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Very much, Mike. I find it to be quite helpful. Thank you. We'll go to agenda item number 27. Consider and take action to select an offer for construction of the County Justice Center and discuss, negotiate, approve a contract and any modifications there too. Turn it over to the building committee at this point.
Uh, well, like was presented by Mr. Lloyd, we interviewed three contractors. Uh, Collier Construction, Madison Construction, and Weber Commercial. And, um, I mean, we did have, you know, three very good contractors. I'm gonna fill up. You, anything you wanna add to what you, your insights?
Uh, no, the top three you just mentioned, um, they were all scored according to the committee's scoring tabulations.
Should we read the amounts? I mean, the public doesn't know, or may not concede that.
Oh, okay. Uh, well, I guess the base bid, then we actually did the interview process and actually did a score, but I don't, we don't have our score sheets with us right now, but, um, uh, I guess Collier Construction's base bid was 10 million, 330, uh, 330,000 dollars with an alternate one for the drive of 125,000 dollars. Madison Construction had a base bid of 10 million, 590,000 dollars with an alternate one of 216,000 dollars. And Weber Commercial had a base bid of 10 million, 860,000 dollars with a alternate one of 219,000 dollars.
Excuse me, if I could.
Yes, sir.
Say one thing. Uh, as a reminder, the step one prices were read aloud in public and are posted on the county website. So the pricing is public. The step two analysis of their qualms is still in, uh, private hands right now.
But, uh, like I said, all three, uh, were very qualified, uh, contractors. And, uh, so as a consensus, I think it was pretty unanimous about from the building committee to recommend, uh, Collier Construction.
Okay. So you wanna put that in a form of a motion?
Yeah, I moved to, uh, select Collier Construction, uh, for the construction of the County Justice Center and to negotiate, uh, and approve a contract and any modifications.
Is there a second?
Uh, I've got a question. In the event that we can't reach a negotiated situation with some of these issues, are we allowed to back out?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 27 by Commissioner Mallett, second by Commissioner Cox, and that's toward the contract to Collier Construction. Is that the correct name of your company, sir? Is there further discussion?
Judge, could I ask just for some clarity? Is that the commissioners making the proposal that the building committee will now negotiate that contract with Collier Construction? Or is that to come back and have the entire court negotiate that with Collier Construction? It seem to be difficult and cumbersome to have the whole court do that, probably have those members of the committee negotiate the contract and then have you all consider whether to approve it after they've negotiated?
I think that sounds reasonable. Building committee, are y'all up to that challenge?
Absolutely.
Yes, but I, I, I would wanna reserve the, the time to come back and inform the court before we actually get into a formal, uh, agreement.
Okay.
With Collier.
And I'd let the committee know that to keep this process moving, that if we need to call a special meeting versus waiting for our regular meetings, uh, please consider doing so. Okay? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Agenda item number 28, discuss and take action on peer review. The question is, um, or the suggestion was that did we want to have some company do a peer review of what EGAL has done for us through their, uh, putting together this plan, contract, so on and so forth? And one, wait there. One reason this come, or was put onto the agenda is I met a company, uh, at a conference and they said, oh, I understand y'all are doing a new justice center. I said, yeah. And they said, well, uh, one of the things that we do is we review what's been submitted and plans and prices and all of that to make sure that you're getting the best bang for your buck. And I said, well, that's interesting. And I made contact with them. The auditor's office helped supply some information to them. I don't think we ever heard back from them. Is that correct? Okay, so.
Oh, um, I'm.
No.
You're not, you're not the one.
Sorry.
That's okay. But, no, we've heard.
That's, that's not the same company.
'Cause, so I made a contact. Also, Commissioner Walker had kind of the same experience. And based on her experience, uh, this company was then invited in. Commissioner Walker, myself, and that company, uh, talked and discussed, you know, what are some of the things that your company does, et cetera. And we did get a proposal back from that company. Commissioner Walker, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, uh, we have, uh, some representatives here from Vayner.
Banner.
Banner?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I just know Ron.
It's Ron Roberts.
Ron Roberts.
If you'll come to the podium as you're doing?
Yes, sir. Um, so, um, I'm with Banner Construction Management. Uh, we do this, uh, uh, agency, construction management further than our offices. I'm out of the Houston office. We're in Louisiana, Colorado, California. And some of the questions that you guys had posed today are, uh, things that we do, uh, in a constructability review. For example, the, your maintenance guys wants to say that we want quiet courtrooms, but the carpet on the floors creates an issue. So, uh, that has to be taken into consideration. So we do a constructability review based on the, the architect's design, which, which we're sure rate based on the contractor's proposal to make sure that there are any, any holes in it that could be missing that, uh, that will come up and bite us later. For example, small things that you never think about, like for example, if you have the contractor purchasing the chairs and you've got carpet, but you somewhere down the line switch from carpet to, uh, to vinyl, the rollers on the, the chairs have to be changed, because if they're not, you'll slide across the floor on a carpet roller on a vinyl floor. But things like that, so we come in and we review those with, with the team. We talk about what's going on. We try to get the best bang for your buck. Uh, also, since, uh, budget is always an item, what we do is we identify areas that, uh, that you're getting some premiums that you may or may not need, that you can, uh, that you can scale back on. Uh, if it's how much wood you have, how much tiles on the floor, how much carpeting, uh, just small things that, that add up. The landscaping that you're going to do, because if you do the landscaping, it's beautiful, but then. but then they have to be maintained. And so, you have to take those costs into account. We're talking about whether you use gas or electric. I've done some work on a bunch of schools and people are shying, shying away from electrical heat because of the fact that the long-term efficiency is less. The short-term cost is more, but the long-term efficiency is less. So, we do things like that. And in addition to that, we're talking about change orders, we're talking about changes in the contract. You want to negotiate those first. You want to get those out of it before you sign the contract because yes, you will get a better price if you have the price in a competitive, in a competitive format and you know exactly what you're paying for. So, that's what we do. We submit a proposal. My colleague had to leave, but we submitted a proposal and we would love to do the work for you guys.
And I guess I have to talk a little bit more about some of my, the things we discussed in the meeting and how, how my biggest concern was we were hearing that the bid packet was large and did we overlook some things or, or, and how can we, and, and, and let me back up and say, usually you all come in at the beginning of a project.
Yes, sir.
If we were doing construction management, you would come in, work with the architect, work with everybody a long way, the building committee.
Yes, sir.
But we're kind of behind the eight ball as far as that part, that train has already left the station over there. So, now we're trying to make sure that this project could possibly stay on, on task and that we've, with all of the concerns that we're hearing, that somebody outside of the two, the county or Pgal, look at this project and, and, and see if there are ways that we could save money and move forward with negotiation use-
Yes.
And all of those type of things. Is that part of this scope?
That is part of the scope. And it's, and if you look at the scope, it's, it's a, it's a not to exceed number and the hours are in there that we anticipate that we'll need, but we'll not to exceed the, the cost that we put in there. Initially, we would have come in at the beginning, we'll help you with your programming. We would talk to the team members of the building committee to figure out exactly what it is you want, use our expertise. We've got people who've done courthouses all over the country, so we know what, what's going on. Also, since being in the region, we know what, what square footage prices are going for in the area. And so, we come in and, and try to help, help them with that, to say whether we're going to do a stucco or should we do brick, has a cost of brick on it. Also, things help you identify like mechanical systems that you're going, because some mechanical systems are more cost efficient, but you have to order them well in advance because there's long lead timeouts on, on them. So, we come in. So, now that we're in the middle of it, we come in and we help you, we review those documents. The architects, we've, we've looked at some of them, they're, they're great documents, but there are areas that, that, that we think you could, you could gain some, 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 some money back on, some areas that we think you might be able to do a little bit differently. And, and that's what our, that's what we do in our constructability reviews.
According to your, I asked for a scope of work that your company would do in a peer review. And number one, evaluate the bid documents, identifying any potential cost reduction items, determining order of magnitude cost reduction, evaluate the bid documents, looking for items that could be value engineered. Number two, presenting the value engineer list to the building committee and other county officials for approval of any recommendation. Number three, facilitating the contract negotiation process with the selected contractor. During the negotiation project, we will track the identified proposed cost reductions, validate them for reasonability and so on. Number four, work with the architect and the county to finalize the contract with the general contractor prior to the expiration of the proposals in early January and according to the county's timeline. Your fee that you propose, our fee for these tasks is not to, is a not to exceed fee. We have shown the hours, we believe will be needed for each task in the chart below. And you broke those costs down and control tasks down.
Yes, sir.
And number one, evaluate the plans and specification for cost reduction, facilitate and review the same things I read.
Yes, sir.
Negotiate the cost and you broke those down by hours? Is that what those 24 and the 40?
Yes, sir. During the month of November, for project director and for senior project managers, we feel that it takes those hours. We've got our senior people who do this for a living. Banner has a constructability review, course in our company and they do this. And these are the hours, myself, our team members and director will look into and doing this project. And that's what we feel will be required for this particular project. And we'll track those hours and bill you those hours, but we will never exceed those hours.
Okay, it says-
It takes a little more.
Our total not to exceed fee for the work described is $30,240. We also request a 2,000 reimbursable allowance to be established to cover travel and any county authorized expenses.
And you have, and you will approve those.
We only invoice Grimes Counties for the hours we use and the direct expenses we incur as we do the work. And then you go on and you have your deliverables such as your constructability report, your list of value engineering items, and finalizing the contract. So, I think all of us received this. I think Cherie sent it out to everyone yesterday. So, being here from the last project that we did as a county, we refurbished a building and I can't tell you how many change orders we saw coming in. And it changed the scope of things when you go back and you look at the total cost of everything, even after the fact, we saw a lot of stuff coming in.
The, the key to that, or what we try to do is, is do a next review to identify as many of those things as possible. Identify as many things that don't line up in, in the contract. And then the documents, documents are great. And to make sure that everyone has the same understanding.
Right.
The architect has a design, he has a design intent. The contractor bids on, on these documents, he has an understanding. Our position is to make sure that everybody has the same understanding. And also to make sure that the building commissioners and the building committee and the commissioners have the same understanding as well. Because that way, everyone knows what's going on and there are no, there are no inconsistencies or no problems that jump up at the last minute.
I did speak with the county judge of Galis, Galisby?
Yes, ma'am.
Galisby County. And you all just finished a project over there. You've, you've done several projects for them there. And they were extremely pleased. They feel like the money that they spent, they saved money.
That's a job.
And so, y'all did a jail, 50,000 square foot jail over there, 96 beds, administration offices above it, and courtrooms also above it. And he had nothing but praise for this company. I also understand from him that y'all also did some planning studies, some long-range planning studies.
Did those too.
And it's for personnel, facilities, and equipment needed for the future. You're working with them now on an agrileaf extension building and then another smaller facility that you're going to renovate after they move out of that building.
Yes, ma'am.
So, his, his name was County Judge Mark Schroer? Over in Fredericksburg.
Yeah, well.
But I did just want to do some references. I didn't get a chance to call anybody else, but nothing but praise for Ms. Gloria and her team. I'm sorry, Ms. Gloria had to, to leave.
That's okay. We, that's what we do. We step up for the next girl.
And, and I think our meeting went really well with her in understanding, helping translate Grimes County's needs and, and, and what we want. And we already discussed that this is probably too big of a project for Commissioner Mallett and for Al to, to put it on their back, but to also try to get some help brought in to where we have another set of eyes outside of us on the project. So, I don't know if y'all had a chance to review anything or look at anything. Do you want to add anything to that, Judge?
Well, this is just for upfront stuff, which I think we've already identified a lot of stuff where we can make some changes or value engineering, you know, with regards to landscaping and things we might could do, you know, it'd be a change based on, you know, vinyl versus carpet.
I heard us discussing a lot. I don't know if we made any real headway in making decisions.
Well, I mean, but we've identified those items, so if we get numbers, we can, they can kind of come in and go, you know?
Cause we still talking about the heat versus the, the heating situation.
We're talking-
We're talking the landscaping situation. We didn't decide anything, but later on-
No, we're not deciding, but we've identified those problems.
Yeah, we can identify, but my, my, I guess my concern is just making sure that we got everything put out there correctly and that that's been translated and it be translated to us, so that we in turn can translate it to the public. I mean, we've been kind of, the building committee might know what's happening, but we don't know what's, exactly what's going on until we sit in formal meetings like we are today. T, you sit in on that meeting with us, did you have anything to contribute to the discussion?
On the peer review?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it kind of, I think my opinion is that we probably need another set of eyes to look over things to kind of be that buffer. It is a big project that county hasn't had the opportunity to, or taken in in quite a few years. So, if the court sees fit, you know-
What we're talking about-
Their fee that they have is, I think it's a good proposal for the amount of work that they're willing to do for us, that even to help the building committee enter into negotiations with the contractors that you guys just selected.
And I guess that's some of my biggest concern that I was hearing from some of the people who sit on the committee too, is the negotiations and making, getting the best price we can get as far as this building and, and moving the project forward. I mean, we've just kind of been kind of a little stalled a little bit on what we're doing. And it's okay to stall because we need to know, we need to have some definite and definitive answers to some of this stuff that we're, we're questioning or, but like I said, I was hearing from the beginning how big the packet was and, and, and it was given at the last minute and maybe some things came back and we answered those in the meeting prior. But we want to make sure that we're spending so much money here that we're getting the best bang for the buck. And that's, that's my biggest concern. I mean, if we can spend 30,000, I think, on brick, you know, in the pattern of a brick, I, I would rather take that money and spend it.
It was 10.
It was 10. Well, on some other things. I'd, on furniture, for one thing, I'd rather take that and take it to somebody to disco weight it. I'm just kidding. Take, but I think it's important.
Well, a lot of that was, we wanted to try to model and kind of get a vintage look to the courtroom. That was one of our things we wanted to try to, you know?
A vintage look, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, kind of try to, try to show respect to the old courthouse, that we were trying to put some in the design and, I mean, we got pretty elaborate at one point in time, but we backed off on some of that for value.
Mm-hmm.
And maintenance, Al's not here anymore.
But some of the things I'm hearing, we might have to back off a little bit more because if you're wanting to go propane, that's, that's an increase, you know? That's the $200,000 difference.
Well, that's, that's a completely different, you're talking about the facade, that's what I was talking about.
I'm just throwing things out there as far as what costs money.
But we've come up, but we've come up with that already. That's been identified. So, we're going to pay $30,000 to identify what we've already identified.
Well, there are other things. Negotiation.
I, I mean, I get what you're saying, I do.
Yeah.
But we still haven't made a decision.
No.
And that's the area that I'm struggling with.
But we're trying to get information, we're going to get information before we make our decisions on that. I mean, we, we can find out on landscaping, the cost of what we would like to see landscaped and we can get a price for that.
Ms. Mary had it here.
I believe that Collier Construction also offers the same type of service. And I don't know, I mean, it could save money in the long run.
But Collier is the contractor.
I know.
I'm trying to get someone that's not, doesn't have anything to benefit as far as decisions made. Al wasn't happy with Pgal bringing somebody else in to look at the heating, you know, unless we, unless we chose them. You know, this is, could be that extra eye that we're, our ears that we're looking for. And that's my biggest concern, is that we do everything we can to save money on this project. And like he said, we didn't make any decisions on a lot of the things. We're just still talking about evaluating.
What this is to identify a lot of that stuff, so we could, you know, if you wanted to, you know, and just contract them to negotiate, if we found, you know, if we've already found the types of reductions that we can have on there, I mean, I, like I said, it's, I think it would be a repetitive motion to go in there and-
Well, if in that price he finds other-
If you brought it up in to begin with, to help communicate as a building committee to figure out what we wanted and help translate that to the architect and what kind of we're wanting to, you know, I could see that would have been a benefit to begin with. But, I mean, it's already designed, it's-
It sounded like we still need to do some communicating with the, translating with the contractor, or not contractor, with the architects. It's for getting real with the numbers to me on the cost reductions. Sure, sure.
And I understand what you're saying, that you, you can identify some of the costs, some of the things, and, and we have started identifying. Part of the thing that we would do as race to that is, is get real numbers. For example, using Mr. Cox as an example, I'm not saying that the architect's way, but there, he can tell you that it's going to cost, it's going to, he's going to give you back $50,000 back to change 15 trees, alright? And when I know and, and the market knows that it should be $75,000 to, to change 15 trees. So, we negotiate on that on your behalf to see if that's a reasonable number. You may give a number that's incredibly internal and, and terribly reasonable, but we would know that. Other things that we do, as I said, as it relates to that, is from a value engineering standpoint, we identify, we figure out what the real price is, we figure out what the real cost of these things are as well. Small things, for example, like should you order your furniture yourself or should you go through the contractor? Because if you go through him, there's a markup. And I understand the whole timeframe from the architect, because if you order through the contractor, when you occupy the building, you have a, a space that's ready to occupy, your, your court's already occupied. If you order yourself, you can save money, you may have to do some additional scheduling, but, but that's what we do and that's what we know. And I do, it would have been better for everyone had we come in at the beginning. And we will, we will make good use of, of your money. We will not charge for any hours that we don't use. And if we look in it and see that there's nothing for us to do, we won't charge you for, we won't charge you for the things that we are not going to do. We are your agent. The architect has a vision. The contractor has a price, alright, for the project. Our only allegiance is to you. We don't have allegiance to them, we don't have allegiance to them. Our only allegiance is to you. And as an agency construction manager, that's our allegiance. If you don't see the value to us, and, and we'll stop. Cause it is, it is a, it is a not to exceed price. It's not $30,000, it's not to exceed $30,000. If we get in and it's $10,000 and, and we see there's nothing else for us to do, then that's all your pay. It's just a not to exceed number. We won't charge you more than that. And so, if you don't see our value as we go along, then all you have to do from construction management, like you do is say, "Okay, Ron, stop." And it'll stop.
And I, I mean, I think even the contractor, one of the reasons we're talking about the brick was they brought up the, the value engineering of changing the way that brick was laid. So, we wouldn't even known about that change or it was brought up to our attention, but contractor is the one that brought that as a safe, potential safe during our interview process.
Well, like I said, my concern has been from the different members on the building committee that maybe other eyes would be beneficial to us, somebody that's acting on our behalf, you know, to help us with this project.
And that's just, that's just another example of confusion on my part, I guess. I mean- I mean, I, at this point today, I, I don't see how this is money that wouldn't be well spent, uh, but I do understand what everybody else is saying. Uh, I don't know what the right answer is, but I do know this, that there's been enough questions asked and there's been enough confusion and enough, um, just issues that have come up that people don't have answers for. Um, I do believe that it would benefit us to have somebody else look at what this whole scenario looks like now and at the end, to determine if there are other ways that we can go, and if there are, can we save money, or i- if we need to make a change and it's going to cost us more money, is that the best way to go? Um, you know, thirty thousand dollars is a lot of money, but we're, we're talking about investing millions of dollars, and I want to make sure we get it right from the beginning.
T., do you have a comment?
So, on that proposal, your company would take that whole bid document, the eighteen hundred and plus pages, and review it from front to cover?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I know even being part of the building committee, I have not had the opportunity to read that bid document from cover to cover, and I don't know that anybody else on the building committee has either. For one, I have a little bit of a construction background, but a lot of that is foreign language to me. Um, I think it would be beneficial to have somebody who has that expertise and who is willing to sit there and go cover to cover. I mean, just, you know, with the commissioners' court, you guys are privy to that whole packet too. Has any of y'all actually read that bid document from cover to cover?
Nope.
I don't, half of it, I don't know what it is.
Did Al read it?
Al read it, and I, I don't want to say cover to cover, there may have been a few pages that I skipped over, but, um, if I skipped over, that's because I didn't really know what I was looking at anyway.
And I know that it went up really fast. The plans came out a couple of days before this document was supposed to go live, um, and I know that we didn't really have a chance to review it prior to the big doc, bid document going live, um, because we were trying to meet that timeline that we said that we were going to do. On the day that we had the pre-bid meeting, there was a hundred and something, seventy-something page addendum issued out the day of, because of changes that were found or questions that came out just in that timeframe that the document went up with people who were actually reviewing it, so, uh, you know, my opinion is that we, we need another set of eyes on it, just to make sure that the county is going to, um, like they say, get the best bang for your buck, or that we're just, we're really looking at it thorough, you know, the downfall is that you're going really fast, and you don't want to overlook something because it is, it's not a small project, it's a twelve million dollar project that we're looking at, and it's something that you want it to last a hundred and twenty-five years, just like the current courthouse that we have.
Thirty thousand dollars is a small percentage of what we're spending on the whole project too.
John C., did, were you about to say something?
I was not, uh, thank you, Senator. This lady always kicks me when I say too much.
Okay, she was kicking you, okay.
She was too far away from you to kick out.
Okay.
I just want to point out that you, uh, you shopped for your architect, you've shopped now for your contractor, you may also want to shop for this service, and I know that Commissioner has done that, um, but it may be that you also, you want to look around, it's under the fifty thousand dollar threshold, but, uh, you're considering one source today, and certainly it sounds like they have credentials, but, uh, I just think that for the court to, you see, thirty thousand dollars is still taxpayer dollars that you're spending, and you better be sure you've been it correctly.
Well, like the judge say, he talked to one company, never heard back from them.
Yeah, well, I understand, I'm just offering that word of provenance.
Yes, um, that was something you did say though, that struck me, but it'll come back to me. But, um, I just feel like that if we have a committee that's not quite sure what we put out there and what we're getting back, I'm just saying, I think that having someone on board to help us interpret, help us to communicate, help us to understand, help us to stay on task, we're dealing with a limited amount of money, and it's not a small amount of money, uh, and we can't afford to run over in making mistakes that we didn't really thoroughly look at in the beginning.
Well, like I said, mistakes, if they're design mistakes, you're not going to have to pay for them.
But there may be other mistakes outside of design mistakes that, um, Dark said, well, I, he explained that in one of your meetings, that if it's something that they did, it's on them, and it's if something we forgot, it's on us, or like that, those kind of mistakes. So, it's not that I don't have faith in you, uh, reviewing this, but I think we all need to understand the project, you know, we're, I'm not a construct, I'm not into construction at all. I love construction, but I'm not into construction, and this is very, I'm sorry to say, it's, um...
It's overwhelming.
There you go, that's a good word. I was going to say frightening, but overwhelming is good. This is, this is a large project, and I just don't think us as a court can just keep all eyes on it one time, you know? You, you have things that you do, we have things that we do, but having someone outside of us that looks out for our best interest, um, we talked about in the beginning, you said the building committee made a, made a recommendation, we didn't even take the recommendation in the beginning, uh, from the building committee, so that was a concern upfront, so, um, I would just like the co, the confidence of the building committee and the confidence of this committee to move forward with this project, and right now I don't have it.
I mean, there was an issue that came up today that, it was an issue of whether we use carpet or whether we use ceramic tile to, to evaluate that process, and we talk about we want to build something that's going to last a hundred and twenty-five years. How many times are we going to have to change carpet? Or is ceramic tile going to be the way to go in that issue? And if so, what's the difference in the cost? Those are the kind of things that I, I'd like to see, I mean, every, every dollar that we can save on this project is a dollar that we can, um, utilize in, in other areas of the county without additional burdens on other departments and other, and taxpayers having to come up with those dollars as well.
And, and, um, we talked about, I think, peer review maybe at another meeting, or, maybe it was just a, a dream I had, I don't know, but, um, I don't know how long it would take, Mr. County Attorney.
Yes, ma'am.
If we had to go out for proposals, because we're dealing with a timeline, um, we've gotten a proposal from, we asked for one, didn't get that.
You mean on this? Yeah, I wasn't saying necessarily go out for bids formally, same thing that, uh, Ms. Brzezinski did, she didn't go out for formal bids, she called around.
Mm-hmm.
Same thing, typically make the point about my own life and a TV, and of course, I'm probably slightly more frugal than you guys, look at my vehicle, you know that. Uh, anyway, uh, I, uh, I'm going to shop for a TV at three or four or five different places. I'm not just going to buy it at Walmart, not going to one place. Well, that's the same place you are, you're not obligated to, but do you want to shop around? I, I'm not telling you another company could provide the same thing that may have the same credentials, um, for less money, but I'm saying, at this point, do you know that answer? That's, that's the only issue I'm raising.
Well, I, I would at least like to see us make a decision on whether we would need a peer review, and then we could, you know...
Well, my quote, as unofficial as it was, was more than what was recommended or what's proposed here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? But then they fell out of favor because they didn't respond, so I thought, you know, if they're not going to respond to that, how much value are they going to bring to the table? Uh, if you're, if with your research you're satisfied, then, then I think we, I have enough to make a decision. Uh, I don't know if the rest of the court does or not, but...
Well, I hate we didn't get the vote before Commissioner Dobianski.
Mr. Walker?
Here, Walker, um, I hate to belabor the point, you know, you talked about the peer review in great length, um, and personally, I support that, but it's not my project.
It could be if you say so.
I'm out.
It almost sounded like an offer to me.
It's not my area of expertise, um, but I think from what I've watched over time, what y'all struggle with these decisions, and to be blunt, um, Al and the architect don't get along, there's not a tremendous amount of trust that I see between the court and the architect, that's a bad way to go into a project. I think having a third party that's responsible to you, um, that can help manage the different personalities and interests, um, I think is, is desirable, but something else beyond the peer review of the plans, now, if a gentleman from Vayner does his job right, they will probably save you their fee, but aside from that, you also need to look forward, he said something that, that caught my eye or ear, they also do construction management.
That's the next issue.
And I think that y'all seriously need to consider hiring a construction manager. Um, as you said, this has been overwhelming, it's essentially a full-time job for somebody that's already got a full-time job and something else he does for fun called being on the commissioner's court, I think it's asking too much. Uh, I would strongly suggest that you consider bringing a construction manager in, whether it's the same firm that does value engineering or not, but I would strongly recommend that I think in the long run, you will have a much better project and will save a lot of heartache and probably a lot of money in the long run.
Well, Vayner is, is a construction management incorporated, so, you know, this, appreciate your comments very much, because this could be a test, if we feel like we're satisfied with what they do upfront, then, then we could certainly consider them for a construction management group, but I think we've come to the conclusion, we don't know who, but we do know that within our ranks, we don't have the time, we might have the expertise, but we don't have the time to, uh...
Oversight.
Oversight, thank you.
And that was part of this discussion in the beginning, was getting, trying to understand what they do as a construction management group, but we felt like this would be the first step.
And I agree with that, but I think it's something you need to be thinking about.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Because once you get past this phase of the project, and you're actually in the construction, you need somebody...
It's right around the corner.
Looking at it on, on a heavy-duty basis, and I, the, the architect's proposals, I understand, are just construction administration.
Yes.
Which is not day-to-day oversight, not the inspections, it's more of a monthly type process, um, you know, if I understood the contract correctly.
That's correct.
And you're going to need some assistance on that.
Well, we, we talked about it, but we thought we would go out for proposals for construction management, that this would be a first step.
John C., have you seen any...
I have, sir.
Any issues?
Um, well, the, I, I like the oral representation, that you can end it at any point, but that's not contained in that document, so you need to make, ask for that modification before you execute.
Okay. You heard that?
Yes.
So, um, would there, do you have a contract that would have to be signed between the two that we could get over to the county attorney to review?
Um, we have to, all we really have to do is, is to modify that proposal to add the, uh, the terminated little portion of the, in, in our field, it's, it's only paperwork that you do, and the contract is only the amount of work that's done.
Well, I think what you're hearing, Commissioner, is that is the contract, I don't know what you were hoping for, and of course lawyers...
No, I felt like it was, but...
Lawyers usually muck up a deal with a ten or twenty page deal. This is okay with me. The question is, are you okay with what's listed there being the services that you're going to get? Is that sufficient clarity?
Yes.
And the provision as far as being able to terminate when you desire and only pay for what work's been done to that point, that provision is not in there, at least as far as I saw.
Well, if we could get that added before the county judge would, if we decided today to go that route, before he would sign off on it, if we could get a statement added to the proposal.
I'll call my office in a moment.
One, one thing that I would ask is that we're, the number one says evaluate plans and specifications for cost reduction items.
Yes, ma'am.
If you saw something glaring that, and I don't know, is there, would the reverse of that be cost inflation items, that maybe something Caria overlooked or P.G.A.L. overlooked?
Yes, we, we, if, if, if there are things that, that, uh, that are in excess that we saw that we might want to take out, we'll do that, or if we saw something that, for example, if the, if the design said, um, slab on grade and we thought it should be post-peer, then we would call that out to you, because we were looking, because we looked at the geological report as well. So, um, if we find anything that's glaring that we think we can take out, or, or we find something that's glaring that's, um, in excess of cost and we think we might want to consider, we'll highlight those as well, highlight any, any abnormalities that we find.
All right. Ms. Yurin, want to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion that we take action on hiring, uh, Vayner to do a peer review, um, on the Justice Center with the amendments to the said contract, adding the verbiage, adding verbiage.
I've got, I've got a question.
Mm-hmm.
My turn in front. If we modify it right there and I sign it right there, will that suffice?
Sure, as long as you have authority.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I mean, right now it's got Gloria's name on it.
Yeah, she's the vice president, I'm the...
Assuming you have authority, I, we've assumed you had authority to speak for the entity, so I would assume, I'm fine with it. That's what I envisioned was it would just be interlinated on the second page.
Right.
All right, Judge, I made a motion.
Okay, you good with that emotion? That, are you good with that motion? Is there a second?
I'll second the motion, but could you restate that?
Really? I like to take action.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Okay.
You wanted me to really do that, huh?
Is there further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, let it, record shows a four zero, Commissioner Dobianski is excused. All right, agenda item number twenty-nine, consider and take action regarding the burn ban, authorized county judge's signature, be my recommendation, we leave it as is. Is that agreed? Okay. Receive any updates on the strategic plan, anybody have anything there? No? We'll now go to agenda item previously twenty-three, thirty-a. Twenty-three is consideration of possible action regarding the sale or exchange of property being a portion of lots sixteen-two, seventeen, and eighteen, block twenty-six, town of Iowa, as it expected that the court will convene a closed or executive session regarding this item as authorized by section five-five-one, point oh-seven-two of Texas Government Code, deliberation regarding real property. We ask those that are not, uh, involved, please excuse themselves from the room.